For today, Monday, May 6, 2024, we have four of our five members joining us tonight, the planning board. Dylan is unable to make it. This meeting, please note, may be recorded and rebroadcasted and recorded again, I suppose, on the Westford Cat channel. As always, we'll start with open forum. Joe, you have anything for open forum?
Just if anybody's here for 426 Elton Road, they did request to continue that matter to June 3rd. So I'll be picking up again on that date.
Mr. Morissette?
Nothing further.
I'll just remind everybody tomorrow's election day. Do you have anything, Bob?
Nope.
Joni?
No.
Nope.
All right. Anybody in the audience, anything for open forum?
Talk loud.
Okay. Talk loud. Okay. Now we'll begin our public hearings. First one, PB 2404, ZNG, the firearms bylaw. This is a continuation of the public hearing from April 1st, 2024. Joe, Jeff, do you want to start us off?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So as you may recall, the hearing was opened at a previous meeting, April 1st, and at that meeting, the board received benefit of some public comments. One of the items the board tasked us with is exploring the possibility of looking at the IA or Industrial A zoning district to see what that might look like with the buffers to schools, to see, you know, what that might do to possible sighting of firearm businesses. So we did work with our GIS department. There is a graphic in the packet. I also have a few here tonight if people want to see this map. Basically, everything shown in the green is what was on the table before, the commercial highway and industrial highway zoning districts. These sort of yellow-ish represent the schools, and the light blue areas are the IA zoning districts. So that's something that was not there before. So what is the light blue is something that the board is at least considering based on public comments at the last time. And then there are two additional pieces of correspondence received today that were not timely for inclusion in your packet. They are handed out at your stations, and I don't know if we have these electronically, but one of them is here tonight who can speak to it. And the other simply showed support for the proposal. And we will amend the packet to include those two pieces of correspondence. And meanwhile, if anyone wants a map for up close, look free to share. We have a few more we can hand out. And of course, we are happy to try to answer any questions the board or the public might have tonight.
Great. I think it'd be wise to start to recognize the correspondence, at least in our package, and that we've received since. So just one thing for the board's consideration, we did get a letter from the Health Department suggesting we change language. The proposed statement reads, "This section is intended to maximize protection of public health, safety, and welfare." They suggest that we choose the following language. "This section is intended for the protection of the public's health, safety, and welfare." Instead of maximize protection, they recommend that intended for the protection. We can discuss that down the road in a minute, should we want to. We then also received correspondence stating that they did not want any firearms businesses in Westford, that there are plenty of options elsewhere. Received correspondence, again, as Jeff said, from a physician who was in favor of a firearms bylaw. And then lastly, we received -- Mr. Wood, you want to stand up and ask your question, or you want me to read your?
I was going to have to read it, if that's okay. If you have other things you want to?
Nope. This is the last one we talk about before we go to the public hearing, so.
So this will be part of the public hearing?
Yep.
Yep.
So it's in your packet. So this is more for the benefit, Diane Wood, 122 Depot, 122 Depot. This is more for the benefit of the community and the audience, since they don't have an opportunity to see it. So I'll just simply read. So it's related to buffers and setbacks that we have discussed in the past. Want to revisit that and want the community to better understand what's on the table and what we're talking about here. So I'd like to better understand why more buffer categories are not included in this most recent draft, other than the buffers between firearms businesses, which is 500 feet, and schools, which the draft says is now 1,000 feet. This is in stark contrast to the prior version that included childcare centers, religious organizations, playgrounds, and other businesses where children generally congregate. We have repeatedly heard from the planning board that setbacks are generally not critical and that the market will dictate all of the locations. This may have been a reasonable option in the past, but we are in a different era, and the atmosphere has changed with many unknowns in the future. We should be doing everything and anything we can to minimize any threats of gun violence risk to our community while retaining the rights of our resident gun owners to purchase firearms, ammunition, and not be more focused on the desires of new firearms businesses in town. If we are eager to attract new business, most would welcome a host of other kinds, and many would not want our town labeled as the closest firearms-friendly community. I also suspect Westford voters do not want to see our community in the news blindsided by the thought that we could have been more vigilant but willingly chose not to. To date, I've not found any other community who is or has pursued a firearms bylaw with those minimal buffer categories, including some of these, including these communities, Acton, Maynard, Dedham, Sudbury, Plainville, Wellesley, Littleton, Westwood, and Westwood. The Gifford Law Center has also set similar reasonable setback standards to sensitive areas for communities to consider, and most of the communities have done so. Please consider expanding the setback categories in line with other communities. I understand the response that the market, the market will solve this issue, and it really isn't. But we don't have any data one way or another.
I think you're a little confused, at least in my opinion. The market has nothing to do with setbacks. The market was --
True, true.
The market discussion was about the number of licenses.
Number, okay.
Right, so it's certainly not about setbacks.
Okay. So there isn't any data, not regarding the number, I'll clarify that, but regarding setbacks proving one way or another, that setbacks would have helped or would not have helped in a situation. But that isn't a reason to throw out any of the categories that are here, especially if there's precedent from other communities, you know, to do so. And I guess the bottom line is, if you could do things to minimize risk in any way, I'm still baffled as to why leadership would not want to, as long as it doesn't impact our voters directly. And that's the one that I have really high time wrestling with. It's not going to negatively impact our voters in your community. Why wouldn't we do everything and anything possible? That is not a huge negative impact to our community. Thank you.
So I'll give you at least my personal opinion, and then I think a little history. Personally, I don't, if the chief hadn't come to us asking for some guidelines about the separation, I wouldn't support any bylaw. I don't think it's necessary. All right? I think it's undue regulation that's unneeded. This town voted very clearly that they did not like the first rendition of this bylaw. It was, as you know, shot down at a town meeting, and I think a big portion of it was the setbacks. The more that we built up the bylaw, the less resistant, the more resistant others came to voting it in. So I am of the theory or of the favor of seeking what the chief is looking for, his idea of what we need to do to protect the town, and moving forward with that in the hopes that it would be approved by the town voters. The town isn't going to approve another bylaw as was brought before. So as a board, well, I won't speak for the board, but that's my opinion, and I'm certainly willing to let any other board members chime in.
Let me address that, because I want to, first off, I want to make clear, clarify my comments from last meeting. We got into a discussion about whether it was an overwhelming victory or loss or whatever. The results were 590 yes, 477 no. And that was 55.3% yes versus 44.7% no. We are in a situation here where the sense of the meeting was in favor of a firearms bylaw, but it wasn't the two-thirds majority of 66.7% needed to pass a zoning amendment. And so that's how we've gotten to this situation. And for me, that's why we've continued on to work with the chief and look at what we can do. Now addressing Ms. Wood's comments, I think, as Michael just said, we're trying to get to a solution that the voters would accept. And so we've gone to a simpler approach than what we did back last year with the special town meeting. And so we've simplified the setback concepts, because I think that's what probably was a complicating factor in why the bylaw amendment was not adopted. So for me, I'm listening to the chief and his primary concern of the setbacks amongst the gun shops themselves. I think a lot of the other setbacks, in my mind, are feel-good. They, we want to do that, but I haven't seen fact that shows they add necessarily to the safety in Westford. Now, we had a lot of reports last year during our previous hearing that were submitted to us from the Board of Health and the Health Department, and those reports applied to many other communities, mostly urban and cities in other states. And it was hard to extract correlations with Westford. So what we've done here is gone to a simpler approach. I think we agree with the chief in terms of what is the best way to safely have these firearm businesses co-located in the community, and we're trying to work towards a solution that can get passed. And I think for all of us, that is kind of the goal, is how do we bring something that the two-thirds majority of the Westford voters would accept. So.
Can I just make one last thing?
You can stand up for my phone.
I'm trying to stay up there. I apologize. Diane Wood, 122 Depot. I do hear that the last town meeting, we didn't get the two-thirds vote, and we throw out the numbers of 55 and 47. Let's all acknowledge the fact that last town meeting in October was not an ideal situation at all, at all. Yet, everybody refers to, "Well, it didn't pass." It didn't pass. We all agree that that was a very unfortunate situation, with hundreds and thousands, couple of thousand, you know, voters, and the difficulty getting in and out. People were not even allowed to vote because they couldn't find a parking space. They turned around. So to use that as the reason or as the percentage, I feel, is just inaccurate altogether. If it was like last week, last week, a special town meeting, totally understood. But last October, do we all forget how difficult that meeting was? It was really difficult. Threats were made. People were uncomfortable. People were awkward. People were yelling. It was out of control completely. We all accepted that, and we moved on. But for a second, I don't think we should use that and say, "Well, it didn't pass in October," and that's what I'm hearing from people.
I'm willing to accept that there was a difficult situation last year. It was slow to get everybody in, but I see no evidence that that affected participation, and certainly to the point where 12% is what we would have needed. I'm not convinced in any way that that situation took that many votes away. If there had been two or three votes difference between passing and not passing, okay, I'm willing to say that that could have swung it. But I heard nothing about people being turned away.
They couldn't find parking spaces. They were frustrated, so they were off the roads.
But that's, yeah.
So, but thank you.
Okay, thank you. Joni?
My only thought is that, similar to what everyone else has said, unless we bring a pared-down version, we're going to be in the same jam again. So to start here and start adding, 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 I think, I think we're just getting back in the same situation. We want something that's going to pass. We want something that's going to work. So I think, and I was under the impression, and maybe I'm wrong, because again, I'm the newbie, but I thought we couldn't really bring back the same, it had to be extremely different.
We could, as planning board, we could.
We could, okay.
We're the only ones that can.
Okay, okay. So I think we're, right now, on the right track, and I think we'll get something which is better than nothing.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, I echo Bob's comments. I think, you know, at the end of the day, we want to get something that can pass, to get some protections in order. Right now, there's nothing in place, and the chief has voiced that he's got some concerns about that, which we all agree. So we want to have something that can pass. And Ms. Wood, you point out there's, there was a lot of contention at the last fall meeting, because there was people on both sides of this. So we need something that's going to be able to pass with a two-thirds majority. And if we, I think that we're trying to put together a solution that will be appealing to both sides, so we can get some protections in place.
Hi, Chris Clunes, Texas Road. I have a couple of comments and some questions. I'm wearing purple. I'm wearing neither red nor blue. I just don't want to get caught in the crossfire on this. And we have so many polarized arguments in town right now going on. Anyway, a couple of questions. I didn't see in this version, or I didn't see any reference to manufacturing in this version. I don't know if that was taken out deliberately or on the definitions of firearm dealer and gunsmith, whether manufacturing is automatically assumed as part of the gunsmithing operation. It didn't mention it. It mentioned repairing, altering, cleaning, polishing, engraving, bluing, assembling, or performing any mechanical operation. If someone is manufacturing, does this apply to them? Or if someone is printing 3D guns, which I understand the 3D printing capabilities allow you to print a gun, and it would be, it could be a weapon, and it could be, it would be plastic and non-detectable, are those kinds of things included in this bylaw, or are they totally out of it?
So quick read of the definition of firearm business. It does appear that it involves mostly the retail or wholesale operation involving purchase, rental, lease, or sale of firearms, ammunition, or accessories, or gunsmithing, which would include a retail operation involving the repairing, altering, cleaning, polishing, engraving, bluing, assembling, or performing. It doesn't say about manufacturing. So just a high-level read, I'm not convinced that manufacturing would fall under the definition as currently written.
It was in the previous version, though.
Well, let me ask, Chief, is there a specific license that they have federally for manufacturing?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes. As well, it is a separate license for Massachusetts as well.
Okay. All right. So I think that's a great point.
Would that be, manufacturing would be covered by some kind of state law if you're manufacturing a gun or a unique gun and then selling it? Would this cover that?
I'm just going through it right now. I would say, the way I read this, firearms accessory and firearm business under gunsmith, that's essentially what they do, is work on firearms, build and manufacture some small pieces. So I would, you know, I would push that to legal, whether or not that would need to be clarified in this bylaw or not.
Yeah, I think it would be good to clarify that before this goes for a town vote, just so that we know. And also, it's probably too new. The 3D printing stuff is so new that maybe some of the laws and the books don't address it. But I know that people are printing guns, and they're not necessarily identifiable. They can't track them, you know?
Well, that's, that's a lot of what the legislation right now has to do with dealing with the ghost guns and 3D printing, and it's both on the federal level and on the local level.
Okay. I just want to make sure that we're not, it's not going through a loophole.
So before we continue, I think that's a great point, and maybe we ask counsel if this should be considered under gunsmith, or possibly add manufacturing under gunsmithing.
That's right. That's two questions. So one, is it currently covered?
Yeah.
And if it's not, is it the board's intention to have that covered?
I believe it is.
Yes. Or 3D printing, which someone may not consider manufacturing, but it's a way of --
I don't know that that's legal at this point. Is the chief, 3D printing of guns is illegal? So we're not going to regulate illegal?
Okay. Okay, thank you. And I had another question. Now, this one, I don't understand exactly what it means. In 6.68 operational requirements, item 4B, "Trained employees shall check identification and compliance with age restrictions prior to customers entering the establishment." I wanted to know what that means. In other words, a person has to be, if you go to an R-rated movie, you have to be at least 17 years old and accompanied by a parent or a guardian. If you go into a marijuana establishment, you have to be 21 years old. If you go into a liquor store, you could be accompanied, if you're, unless you're 21, you're fine, if you're under 21, with a parent or a guardian. I don't see anything that describes that kind of language, and I just wondered if anything, what does it mean, compliance with age restrictions? Are there any age restrictions that we are applying to gun shops? In other words, can little boys, nine or 10, or little girls, 11, walk into a gun shop?
So, you know, I'll let the chief answer this, because this is a state.
Those conditions are under the dealer's conditions of license under state law, chapter 140.
Okay. So what does that, how does that define who can go into the gun shop?
That's what I'm looking at right now. The ages are.
Unaccompanied minors is what I'm concerned about.
Yeah. No, they have to be accompanied. I'm just not sure if it's 21 or 18.
And is it a parent or guardian, or is it just someone over 21?
If you, we can keep talking for a minute, and I'll find the actual section.
Yeah, okay.
Do you have another question while he's looking?
I just have one more comment on, which is a different issue, but.
Yes, there are restrictions in place. There's.
It is identified in state law, so I don't feel that it would be necessary within the bylaw for the actual ages that are specified.
It may not be needed to be specified, but compliance with age restrictions according to state law or whatever, I mean, that would be a nice.
So Chief, one thing I found was no one under 18 can, may purchase a firearm or ammunition, and no one under 21 may purchase a handgun, large-capacity weapon, or large-capacity feeding device.
Right. But can people under 18?
Yeah.
Go into a gun shop unaccompanied by a parent or a guardian? I have read on the internet that some places, young kids are going in in groups and robbing gun shops, breaking laws. Not that that's going to happen here, but it just would be nice to have it defined.
I think underage people going into a firearms business and robbing it, they're not really following the.
Right.
Separate.
Age restrictions.
Right. If it's spelled out in state law, I don't think we have.
Yeah, it's under section 123. I just, I can't find it.
So theoretically, minors should not be allowed into a gun shop unaccompanied by someone who is responsible for them?
Correct. I'm just trying to find the actual.
Yeah, okay.
Age. It is in the law. I hadn't been asked that before, so I'm actually. But it is in there, so I don't believe that it would be necessary within the bylaw. I apologize for not having it readily available.
Well, as long as it refers, as long as the bylaw refers to something that, I mean, it's just a little so vague that, compliance with age restrictions, somebody could interpret that, "Oh, you mean the shop owner's age restrictions," you know?
I think that these key folks, they're so heavily scrutinized by state and federal licenses, they're well-versed in what their restrictions are. I'm pretty confident of that.
Okay.
Do you want to reference it in here as compliance with age restrictions per the state law?
Per state and federal law?
Why don't we, might I suggest we just see what counsel comes up with?
Yeah.
Because sometimes the more, you know, what if things, why don't we see what they suggest?
Okay.
And I'll reserve my other comment for, I don't know if you're going to have the hearing continue a little longer because the language isn't solid yet?
It's undecided at this point.
I'm sorry?
It's undecided at this point, whether we're going to continue the hearing or not.
Okay.
See how the evening goes.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Dennis Galvin, 90 Conket Road. And in the interest of trying to come up with a product that everybody can live with, there are three interests that are involved here. One of the interests is, obviously, the board would like to get, like to get this thing resolved. The chief has interests that he wants to have addressed. And then, of course, there's gun owners in the town, and as well as non-gun owners, who all have an interest in what happens as well. I would like to propose for you a little, some alternatives here. And what came to you before on the Fourth Amendment, and as you know, I think I stated previously, the special permit remains a constitutional issue, or at least in some people's minds, it's a constitutional issue. And you can anticipate that you're going to get some opposition on that in the next, in the next town meeting when it comes forward. I think there's a possible resolution to it, and I just want to offer that possible resolution. And here's the concern. As it stands now, under a special permit, the permit will be, the permit granting authority will be held by an elected board. That's what is of concern to most of the gun owners, all right? The chief has a concern that the state law does not go far enough to be able to provide him with the tools that he needs to be able to regulate the property properly. And I think, looking at chapter 122, there are some vague, vague provisions in there. So here's what, here's what, there's also another concern, and that is, this bylaw will present a possible conflict. State law designates the chief of police of the community, or the commissioner of police, or whoever's in that role, as the licensing granting authority for firearms businesses, firearms, the whole nine yards. This now establishes a civilian authority that also has authority to issue licenses. There's a conflict there. That conflict will become of concern as you go down the road, whether there's a split decision on one of these things, or whether somebody decides to challenge the authority of the board. What I would suggest, or what I think you might want to look at, is that you keep everything as you got it, all right? You've already got a fairly well-crafted bylaw that regulates things. You also have the special permitting authority specified, probably more than it's ever been before. I think the recommendation I would make is simply make the chief of police the special granting authority. He's got the guidelines. He's got what he needs. And I think you won't have opposition, because I think most of the firearms owners, or people who are concerned with the Second Amendment, already see the police chief as the authority for granting. So you wouldn't be creating a diversionary situation. And the police chief, probably, in my opinion, across the state, police chiefs, would probably be better well-versed and understand the rules and regulations related to in-depth, in-depth regulation of firearm sales and ownership. So you come away with it with a product that everybody can live with, all the hard work didn't go to waste. The chief has more specificity into what he can do and can't do, right? And then I think the property owners, the gun owners, and even the folks that aren't, don't own guns in town, have the bylaw that they're looking for, that clearly regulates in the site plan as well as special permit, what can go on in the town. And I think, I think it'd be a win for everybody. So, just for your concern.
Appreciate it.
All right.
Chief, you don't have any discretion in issuing the licenses at this point, do you?
So it's a lot different than issuing a license to carry a firearm. The firearms licensing for a business is, does not give me quite as broad of discretion when issuing the license. There's, there's a lot of difference in unsuitability that I can consider with a personal license to carry that I would have to tread very carefully with on a firearms license, because it's, it's a lot different when we're dealing with that. Because they do go through the federal government first to obtain a license before they can obtain one locally. And they probably would frown upon that. So as far as the special permit itself, again, I would almost counter Mr. Galvin's argument on the special permit. If the chief issues the special permit, it's almost in a vacuum. There's, there's very little pushback on if I issue something. I'm a contracted employee, I'm a civil service employee, so if people don't like my decision, there's not quite as much repercussions, I guess you could say. Whereas, an elected official, if people don't like the decisions that they're making, there is recourse. Obviously, you know, if it was a major misstep on my part, it would probably come before the board and the town manager. However, I just, I think that that takes a lot of the power away from the citizens if a sole person would be the special permit granting.
That was my thought as well, having an elected board. That was my thought as well, having an elected board making it as opposed to someone who's hired by the select board, almost appointed, almost.
Jeff?
Yeah, just under the zoning act, it defines who the special permit granting authority can be. It can include the board of selectmen, city council, board of appeals, planning board, or zoning administrators as designated by the zoning bylaw for the issuance of the special permit. So it's clear that the chief wouldn't fall under the first, say, three or four categories. I don't know if such an entity can be designated as a zoning administrator for purpose of this section of the zoning bylaw. That would be if the board desires a further question for counsel.
That was going to be my question, was can we get counsel input on this? Also, with respect to this, is there precedent? It turns out there are quite a few firearm bylaws now in the state of Massachusetts in existence. Could we find what other SPGAs they might have used in those cases that are different than the planning board or the ZBA? And I guess the other question I had was, is there a possibility of merging these two concepts? You know, can you have one or the other be the, the end decider, but could you, you have a board that served as the advisory review so that you would hold a hearing as we've, we've discussed in the past, as we, we did back in the spring of 2023? But then, you know, kind of bring it down to, could the chief be that final endorser or SPGA? There's just a lot, I mean, my mind, thinking about that.
So the public hearing process, where the chief has to deal with the, you know, the public hearing process and?
Yeah, and take inputs from the general public. I'm, I'm, that's, that's, that'd be one concern I have is, how do you have the general public get to offer their opinions, both pro and con?
Well, presumably, I mean, the plan board might still be the site plan review authority, unless that's another change. So.
Right.
I mean, you would expect such public hearings to be concurrent, but you can certainly ask counsel if it's even, I mean, it may not even be feasible, but we can ask on your behalf.
Or if another community has somehow split, as you've just said, Jeff, split this into pieces, so that the chief of police has some, some role in this. So that's different than just what the, the state has provided the chief with.
So I think, I think, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
I was just going to say, I think the bylaw as written is, involves the chief and involves the police department with the security plan and everything. I think that when we start getting to special permit, it's, you know, it's a major change to a job description as well within the community when we're taking over a responsibility of a, a board and committee. I know of no other place that has a chief of police that is a special permit granting authority for purposes of zoning, you know, in reference to a zoning bylaw.
Two quick, two quick responses, then I'll be done. So the first one is, the chief actually described the reason why there's concern about the special permit granting authority. I mean, he basically said that. We do not want, remember, we're talking, dealing with a constitutional right. We do not want that right being subjected to political, political winds at a time. We want stability. We want people with expertise who are making the decisions, much like you do with, with, with the courts. As to the ability of the chief to fill the role of the special permit granting authority, under Massachusetts law, the board of selectmen, just something to consider, the board of selectmen are considered the board of police commissioners, okay? So whether they could delegate that authority or extend it, that's something that you may want to ask town council as well. So, thank you, that's it.
And I would just add one thing. I, I don't, this is a zoning bylaw amendment, right? Where these firearms businesses can be. And I know, obviously, the eventual concern is that this elected board starts denying arbitrarily requests for firearm businesses, which would certainly not be held up in the courts, right? So, again, now asking the chief to take over a, a zoning issue that's the purview of the planning board, I don't know that I'm comfortable with that, but.
Well, I think it could be kind of a hybrid thing, because site plan review is something that we do, traffic flow, safety, things like that. That's part of planning board's purview. Not necessarily want to make the chief have to deal with all that stuff, but see where, obviously, the chief's input is going to be very important.
Well, he's got that, right? So he's got that in the security side.
So he already has that. He's already much, very much a part of this process. So I think if there's, yeah, I think.
And Mike, to your point about, you know, arbitrary, if you recall, we did have a, a firearm business application come before us back in spring of 2023. And this board was requested to make an arbitrary decision by many of the citizens that were opposed, and it did not. This board upheld the sighting of that business, I think it was five zero for the vote, because we did not have any grounds to act upon. And I, I hope that demonstrated that this board used what was provided to us as means to review that application and therefore grant it, despite there was a pretty strong outcry to deny it, and we did not.
And I, I agree in my mind, all we're approving or is the actual location in accordance with this, that it's really still the argue of the chief to say, hey, this business has an issue with his license. So.
Well, chief, to make sure that the security plan is adequate, but they don't want it supposed to, right? Okay. Anybody else have anything they want to add?
So I'm going to attempt to answer the age restriction.
Yes, please.
So it, it does go along with the properly licensed individual with an FID card. You can enter a firearms business at 18 with an FID card, 21 with an LTC. Although you can get an FID with parent's permission at 15, you cannot enter a firearms business, or you're not supposed to enter a firearms business unless you're properly licensed without accompanying an adult, a properly licensed adult.
And just any adult, because, should it be a parent or guardian?
If it is just a com, any adult accompanying, there is concern, like, for example, in liquor stores, young kids will find somebody who's 18 years old and go in and see if they can get some liquor. The person may just say, oh, yeah, I'll take you in and buy the liquor or whatever. That, that's the concern. Is it a parent or guardian?
So in order.
If a minor goes into the bill, into the store, it should be, I would think, a parent or guardian.
It would, it would be an adult, because.
Just an adult.
They have to be properly licensed to be able to purchase anything within, within the store.
Right.
And they also have to undergo a background check, et cetera. But to purchase the ammunition, they have to provide the LTC or the FID. 18 years old, they're, they're authorized to be able to purchase ammunition on that FID.
Right. So a young kid could go in with just an 18-year-old friend who's.
No, an 18-year-old person could go in and purchase ammunition.
Yeah.
Or a firearm, but it would take a lot more paperwork to go along with that at that point. And they would have to be accompanied by somebody with the LTC or have the, the proper paperwork saying that they are to purchase this firearm, and the only thing they can do with it is bring it home, or go to the range. And it has to be locked, it has to be unloaded. There's, there's a whole bunch of rules. I, I don't know if you've seen before the firearms book that I will usually bring. It's about an inch and a half thick, and it's all just firearms related law. So 18 to enter, 21, 18 with a properly license, so FID or LTC, LTC when they're 21. A 24-year-old adult can enter a gun store.
But a 14, my understanding is, a 14-year-old could enter a gun store with his or her.
With an adult.
Parent.
Yes.
And that would be okay?
Yes.
And the question is, can a 14-year-old enter a gun store without a parent or legal guardian?
No. They have to be, they have to be properly licensed to be able to go into the store unless they are accompanied by an adult.
But they could, but they'd be in violation of the law.
Right.
Yeah, that's, that's the main thing.
Anybody can walk in, so that's part, that's part of.
That's the main thing. Is, I don't, we don't want necessarily kids walking in.
Right, but that's.
Just say, oh, I'm just looking around. I'm not going to buy anything. I'm just.
It's covered by state law.
Okay. Thanks.
Sorry.
So chief, you said something there that I hadn't heard before. You originally said, before you got to answering Chris Kuntz's question about children under the age of 18, you talked about any person entering must be properly licensed? Can an unlicensed 22-year-old, for example, walk into that store?
Yes, it's a store. It's a retail store.
They can walk in, they just can't purchase.
They can't purchase.
Okay, I just want to clarify that.
You can't restrict, you can't restrict access to a business like that. So there's already enough rules around the firearms purchase. People can go in and they can look at, you know, as long as they're properly licensed to get into the facility and be able to look at, you know. You have Cabela's down at, in Hudson, you know, you have six-year-old kids walking around there, and they can see things behind the counter on display. So it.
It's, yeah, that, that's.
You assume that they are properly accompanied by an adult, but in order to purchase anything behind those counters, or manipulate, handle, or browse anything more significantly than looking through it through the glass, you need to be properly licensed. They're, they're going to ask for identification.
So for business that was strictly a firearm business, like we are conceptually talking about here, any child or any individual under 18 should be challenged at the door entry as to whether they could come in, and that they're with an appropriate adult.
Yeah, and I believe that the previous bylaw had specified anybody over 12 wasn't even allowed entry. But I think that was specific to the previous bylaw. I've never read anything like that in Mass. general laws, because again, you have Bass Pro, Cabela's, all these other stores. So they're just, if it's a firearm specialty store, they're just, they're going to check an ID, make sure you're 18 and over to come in. In order to touch any of the merchandise, manipulate it and everything, they're going to want a little bit more than that. You can, you can, you can manipulate the firearm and everything if, if you're not, technically, if you're not properly licensed and you're 21 and over, because you can do it under the licensee's firearms license, right? Like, they have ranges in different places where you can actually rent firearms. But in order for anyone to purchase anything from that store, you have to be properly licensed. You have to go through the background checks and everything else. It's, it's not a, you don't walk into a store and buy a firearm and walk out with it 15 minutes later in Massachusetts.
It's not just purchasing that gang of kids.
Well, that's another matter.
Yeah, that's covered under a lot of other.
Freshened down the road.
Right. It's, we can do a deep dive, but.
No, I understand.
A lot of those underlying causes that are kind of being brought in under these scenarios are, are all criminal in the first place. So specifying in a bylaw, I don't think is going to have any sway.
Okay. At this point, Mike, I guess I would suggest we need to wait for more input.
Well, I was going to ask the board. So Jeff, we had a couple things we're going to ask you to ask counsel.
Yep, three things at least.
Mm-hmm.
Want to just run through those real quick?
Sure. Want to find out if the 3D printing of guns, or just generally the manufacturing of guns are covered by this bylaw? Are they considered firearm businesses?
I think we determined 3D printing is, is ghost guns, right? And so that's not, it's illegal. That wouldn't be covered in the bylaw. So I think, is, is manufacturing actually covered under the question, is manufacturing covered under gunsmithing?
Or could it be?
Or should it be a separate category?
I mean, we can certainly work with the chief and counsel, just, we'll get at the heart of the manufacturing question. And then, secondly, I guess, is can the police chief be designated as the special permit granting authority, whether or not with advisory input from others?
So why don't we talk about that as a board?
Yeah.
I think, I love Dennis taking it out of the box and coming up with these thoughts. I don't, at first glance, think it's feasible, but, you know, if, what I'm looking to do is, do we close the public hearing tonight with the question on the manufacturing that can easily be answered, or do we keep it open with this discussion on the chief, police chief being the special granting authority?
I'm in favor of keeping it open so we can have this discussion, because I think it's more than just a question of the chief as the SPGA. I would like to maybe have an investigation done for the other bylaws in the, in the state, other towns, as to alternative structures of, of who is reviewing and granting the firearm business licenses, and understand that with respect to zoning, okay? It might be that the SPGAs are all planning or ZBAs, but if there are alternative structures, I'd like to hear about it before we make a decision.
Tony?
I agree. I think I would like to hear what counsel has to say. And I do think that it has to be more a coordinated effort, you know, because obviously, we can't, as a board, make a decision without the chief, even on, even to me, even on a sighting. I think we would need the chief's input, no matter what. So I, I would be curious what counsel has to say.
Well, I think since we're going to be finding out maybe what some other of the SPGAs are, I'd be curious to see what that is, what that looks like, if anybody has broached that subject, take a look at that. But I appreciate Dennis for the suggestion.
Yep. All right, two, two things?
Yes, sir.
Can I just clarify? So, so for the.
So, so two things. Did I hear that you probably are going to leave it open?
At this point, yep.
So my support of, of doing that is, there's just so much going on in town now. Everyone's overwhelmed. School committee meeting going on tonight, based on the override, tomorrow's vote, et cetera, et cetera. And a lot of, we all know, a lot of balls in the air right now juggling. So appreciate that it's being extended and to validate all the other communities and what they're doing. Can, can someone just explain to me why we're considering, nothing against the chief, but why we're seriously considering Dennis's suggestion? What does that do for the community? I'm concerned.
I think, Diane, we, we owe it to the community to investigate all possibilities. It's quite possible, it's not even possible, it's not even a potential alternative.
There's a constitutional right question here, right? And by granting a special permit, there is concern that we eroding that right, okay? So it's not a guaranteed automatic right. So.
What would be the, what's the benefit? Why?
So by, by doing so, I think there's some that would feel that it would be better than an elected board to have the chief of police be that person, or some hybrid of that. So that's the theory behind. Am I correct, Dennis?
Yeah, for a bad example, let's say there's five people on the planning board who are completely pro or anti-gun. And then they vote accordingly whenever each application comes in. That's what I think some people are wary of, where we've already shown that we've voted.
Successfully.
And, and I disagree with it, because.
With the town, I mean, with the, with the, with the planning board, I wish, I should say, with the site plan review required. So.
I mean, leaving it from, to one person from a, a five-member elected board, I think, may, do you have the opposite we're looking for? But it's something that's been brought up and we'll, we'll investigate for sure.
Yeah.
Okay. The, the checks and balances with one person bothers me. Respect and appreciate your position.
I'm in 100% agreement, to be honest. I am.
There isn't any, there isn't any with going this route. So that's my input for this. And I'm sure we'll hear from counsel, and I, I hear you, and I.
Let's wait for counsel, then we can have that discussion if necessary.
And can I add? I guess, should we ask specifically, is there some type of coordinated effort?
Well, I think that's what we have.
Yeah.
With this bylaw, we have coordinated effort.
But here in the question from Dennis, let's just investigate, see, are there any other alternatives besides what we have? We're not sure we know of any, but let's investigate. Be very quick. Yeah.
So just to clarify, the research you're asking us to do, it's limited to just special permit granting authorities for regulating firearm businesses in Massachusetts. Okay? And then, secondly, I may have missed it, but did we receive input about the IA zoning district?
Oh, we have not.
That would be helpful. That would affect other parts of the draft language.
All right. So again, as Mr. Morissette has said, he's updated this map. Do we have it up there, Joe? Any discussion on this?
Again, the light blue would represent those additional possible areas. That would be the IA zoning district.
Generally, you have your spots around Route 40 and this area here. This is a small section of Graniteville, and then this is essentially an unbuildable parcel.
Right. What lands?
So what is that out, there's a couple outliers there, Joe. Are those, what are they?
Yeah, in this area up here, I'm guessing, is what you're talking about.
Those plus the quarter circle.
There are a few split zone parcels there. I'm sure there's a story as to how that happened. I don't know it off the top of my head. There are a few split zone parcels there. I'm sure there's a story as to how that happened. Um, I don't know it off the top of my head. They are a split zone, so I would likely have a factor in what they could realistically do, especially with no frontage.
Worries? I'm sure there, there is a wonderful story. And then that small street, is that Carl? Is that Carl Thompson?
This is Carl Thompson right here, yeah.
And you've got a lot of Newport materials and Fletcher, Brannet and Quarry.
Yep.
There. And then you've got, uh, the twelve north Main Street area further to the west with some Broadway and then Bridge Street portions. And then, as Joe mentioned, that, uh, Whatland area, um, along Littleton Road, not too far from Tadmuck.
I'll ask the audience, anybody have any questions or comments about the new map? Please.
Thank you, Chris, page twenty-three, Pierre Sav. I guess my question is, well, one of my questions is, are you considering this now? What is, where does this stand?
So, yeah, we originally had basically just the green and a question had come up for the, some of the, it was industrial.
A.
Industrial A district to be included.
And so you are considering that tonight, is that?
We are just discussing, yep.
So then, a couple of comments. I noticed, I happen to be on the Westford Cat board, and Westford Cat, where they are right now, happens to be in there. And we have a lot of camps during the summer, and I know you don't want to have a buffer for childcare, but, um, I, there are also a lot of construction right now on Route forty, near where that is. There are a lot of residents coming in, there are a lot of current residents right there. That is a, a large space with a lot of potential for gun stores that I would. It, this changes a lot. This changes a lot. You're adding a lot of, of extra area. Um, and, and to a point that I believe Chief Chambers made, or was made by this, whatever various meetings, was that having it along Route, Route ten, one-ten, excuse me, allows for more control. It's not spread out all over town. Um, so there's that. There's also, can you go back to the blue area that is, I think it's next to twelve north Main Street? Is that, what is that blue area right there? Is that the, the mill building that's owned by, uh, the person who owns the mill in Stowe? I forget their name.
Chris, maybe Chris Franklin or some company that he could.
Yeah, yeah. So, um, I don't know if I want to be specific about it, but he owns a, a mill in Stowe. It was in the news that he is bringing gun stores and within five hundred feet of multiple ones over, or looking into it. I don't know if they succeeded. So that area right there, which is close to many residents, um, is quite concerning, because that seems like that's a viable area with a similar mill in Stowe that is, that has, is exploring gun stores right now. So I would, anyway, I would hope you consider all of that when you're looking at those spaces. Thank you.
Thank you. Jeff, can you refresh my memory? Was there a request to, uh, this?
There was a request by a member of the public who actually lives off of Carl Thompson, I think, uh, for, that the board consider including the IA zoning district. And so you requested that we simply show you graphically what that would look like, so you could consider it.
I mean, I'm of the opinion that it spreads so far into, out of the commercial highway. That I would be more comfortable just keeping it as we had it before.
Yeah, as it was stated to us by that individual, I remember when I, I can't remember the individual, it, it sounded like they were just thinking about the, the portion along Route forty. But as we look at this now, there are all these, there's too many outliers that are nestled in residential neighborhoods or behind residential neighborhoods even, I don't know. That, um, it doesn't have the same feel of control and, and tightness as, um, the commercial highway does along, uh, one-ten.
Yeah, I'm, I'm happy sticking with the original.
Yeah.
I, I would prefer to stick with the original, too.
All right, so, I mean, it was gonna continue the public hearing, but I think you got the feel of the board on that, Jeff.
Okay.
Is there anything else you want us to clear up before we move on?
Uh, I guess it just makes sense for what would be a logical date, uh, given we have a few questions for counsel and a little research. I don't expect May twentieth to be feasible. Um, I think June third would be the absolute earliest.
June third?
Yes.
Is that available? I mean, do we have a lot going on that night?
We'll have a proposal for seven Carl Thompson, and we just continue four-twenty-six Littleton to that evening as well.
You would prefer June seventeenth? We can do that.
Uh, it's, I'd rather, I'd like to keep it going, but if, uh, the seventeenth's better for staff, seventeenth is fine.
I will be remote on the third of June.
We'll be remote on the third of June. Does everyone else know if they can be here on June third?
Uh, it should be all of you.
So what we could do is we could try for June third, but we would encourage everyone to check the planning board agendas in advance, in case for some reason it's not gonna be ready. Uh, we will put that, um, information on the agenda, but we're gonna try for June third, it sounds like, okay?
So I'll make a motion that we continue the public hearing for, um, firearm zoning bylaw amendment number.
PB twenty-four oh four.
Twenty-four oh four.
Twenty-four oh four to, um, June third.
At Town Hall at seven P.M.
Yes.
Motion to second. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Thank you, everybody. Okay, moving along to PB zero-nine to, uh, four-twenty-six Littleton Road. Can I have a motion to continue this to the, uh, June third hearing?
So moved at seven P.M., Town Hall.
Second.
Motion to second. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All right. Thank you, chief.
Thank you.
Uh, first general business item, seventy-one Powers Railroad, request for minor modification to amend previous conditions of approval and request for extension time for the special permit. Jeff or Joe?
It's the Joe Show now.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So this one comes with a minor modification. We have a graphic up on the screen, um, provided by the applicant when they went for a minor modification request to front of the zoning board. Um, the red squares on there represent what was previously approved by this board, uh, back, I believe, at the end of twenty-twenty-one, beginning twenty-twenty-two timeframe. Um, and the, the colored graphic represents what they're, uh, proposing to you today. It's very similar in nature. Um, all the houses kind of shifted in location primarily to a strip of land that they were counting on before, uh, for the property they, in their title research, found that they did not own. Um, so that caused, uh, some, some reorienting of the buildings on the site, um, some associated infrastructure changes. All that has been reviewed by the engineering department. Um, they are comfortable. There'll still be some details to work out with the, uh, health department as well as the water department. Um, but overall, they're, they're comfortable with the changes. There's been a little bit of back and forth between the applicant and the engineering department on that, uh, so that's how we've gotten to that, to this point. I don't know if the applicant is here tonight and wants to add anything, uh, other than that.
For the record, Bill Hanigan with Hanigan Engineering, it's always good to go to a meeting and not have to say anything.
We like it, too.
Well, just back to the history of it, when this was originally approved, um, there was a strip of land which the railroad owned. It was thought that it was still entitled this one, but it was an old railroad bed. Um, as we're doing the, uh, as the land surveying property part that was being done, uh, to merge the parcels together as requested by this board, the CBA, discovered that they actually, that that piece doesn't actually exist, that that's actually merged in the title of the abutage to the north. So since we don't have ownership of that piece of land, what we did was we just took the buildings and shifted them around to meet the setback requirements. Once we did that, we then adjusted utilities, um, as needed for drainage, um, and for, uh, for sewer, uh, for the, for the underwater, for that, for the, for the main site. We did not change the location of the septic system itself, leach field. We did not change the location of the underground drainage system that's in the cul-de-sac. All the utilities around that did move. We also maintained the planting requirements at the backside, uh, of the property as part of this change. So, uh, the planting areas are shown here. This is more of a, this is an earlier version of the, of the plan, but now one of the comments that came back from, from Paul Starrett was to, to add the planting plans to this set. So the current set that's on the table right now, has all the details that were requested by the town departments, as well as the planting, um, plans, uh, have been added to the, to the details, so.
This was the early version.
Yeah, I think it's the, uh, the April version of the plans. Yeah, there we go. So that shows all the information. Um, there is one change that was made after this one went through, where we provided additional separation between the water main and the water services in that underground leaching, um, or drainage facility. Um, the, uh, the, the board health brought to our attention, it's actually in the well regulations. And we're not using a well, so I, I talked to Sam about that, and I said, you know something, we can make it work anyways, so we decided to make it work, so that discussion was off the table. So, um, I believe we satisfied all of the, uh, department conference comments. Uh, the water department had, um, I think there were some questions about the, um, the details, so we've added those details to the plans. That's, that's completed. And we have had conversations with the board of health since then. We've, we've submitted our revised septic plans to them. That's just gonna require a, a change of ownership form to put the new permit into the, uh, the applicant's name. And we've talked to, uh, Sierra regarding conservation. Um, all the erosion control stayed in exactly the same spot. So it's really just the stuff in the, um, constructions area that's changed, but not, the, the limits of the work, et cetera, have really not changed on the product. So we're gonna go to the commission, um, as a courtesy, once we get done here, um, just to kind of review the plans and make sure everyone's on the same, on the same page and have these plans become the plans of record for their permit as well.
Great. Uh, go to the board. Bob?
Nope, I'm, I'm good.
Tony?
No, engineering is happy, so I'm happy.
Yeah, same, engineering looks like they're. Happy with it. Um, I was just surprised, I, I actually thought at first glance that that strip of land was still there, but just not owned by this property owner. It was actually owned by.
Yeah, the assessors' maps need to be updated. Um, I'm not sure who's in charge of that, but, um, we, we did put a plan on record of our property, and the plans that have bought it are on record as well for a Burge, um, Burge Run Machine and Ideal Block, I think it is. Um, so. It does show up still in the assessors' maps, which then translates over to Mass GIS, it shows up on there as well, so.
All right, terrific. I don't have anything. Looks fine to me. Um, have a motion to approve the minor modifications and amend the previous conditions of approval for PB two-one-four-two, Seventy-one Powers Road?
If I, if I may, I apologize. One, one thing that we do have to request is that the condition for the access trail be removed from your conditions as well, which I believe was stated in the letter.
Okay.
Okay, so that would be a condition to remove. I think it's condition number seven.
Yep, so in addition to, to that, the zoning board kind of took similar action. They did agree as part of that to try to provide, um, another form of access for public benefit on the property that they control. The only thing we're asking is that, uh, whatever decision we put out by the boards, that that also become of record, because right now you have a decision out there, I believe.
It's actually on the plan. Proposed fifteen-foot-wide pedestrian trail easement, so that if the town comes forward in the future and decides that they want to put a, put an accessway there, that we've accommodated it. We're, we're not putting any buildings in there. Um, there's, everything that's, that's there would be underground. The septic tanks are actually outside of that easement area as well. So that, that's how it's been accommodated.
Just the fact that the original subject property was larger than what is the current subject property. We want something of record to make clean that what was once on the table, a part of it, is no longer on the table. That's all.
So there is a plan of land that was recorded at the registry of deeds that shows the boundaries of the property in eighty-one X plan?
Yep, we just want their decision, though, to.
Okay.
You know what I mean? Because their decision, that's of record.
Correct. I see what you're saying. I thought you were talking about a plan of record. Yeah, okay.
We're good.
We're good. Someone wanna make a motion? So moved. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All right, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, good luck.
Thanks.
Yeah, thank you, guys. Have a good night.
Okay, moving along, seventy Brookside Road, request to authorize administrative review of approval of seasonal outdoor seating on the east side of the building of One Stop Pharmacy. I don't know where you are.
No pharmacy.
Save the best for last, huh?
That's right. I don't know, minutes are looking pretty slick.
I'll be quick, I promise. I know it's been a long night for you guys, and I appreciate your time. Um, my name is Matthew Farber. I'm the store manager of, uh, NAB's One Stop. Uh, it's been a family-owned business for the last twenty-three years approximately. Um, Westford's a pretty remarkable place. Sorry, I didn't expect. It, it's, it's kind of like the town I wish I grew up in. It really has a sense of community, and I see that with my customers. If there's, you know, somebody's hurt or they struggle, even if something simple as their battery dies, you know, people will go out of their way if a customer's locked their keys in their car. Like, literally, if someone to call and we'll get them down there and they'll take care of it. And that sense of community is, is what I really love about Westford, and I wanted to do something for the longest time that would really be representative of that and include the community in making that also. So if you look at some of the pictures, obviously the building is in much need of a paint job. Um, so I couldn't think of a better way to do it than kind of celebrate what once was. And it used to be Nabnassett Pharmacy. It was built in approximately nineteen sixty. And I've talked to Lori Iliopoulos, who's the daughter, uh, of one of the brothers who started it. She's the one who gave me the pictures. And I have, uh, two muralists. My, my niece is also an artist. I've also been in contact with Betsy Murphy from WA. She has a student that's gonna be helping painting the wall white, and then possibly another student will also help with the mural. Um, and that's kind of, I have customers helping, I have friends helping, I have family helping. Um, and basically, that mural would be what the pharmacy used to look like on the side of the wall. Um, and a combination of those two pictures, uh, basically the, the pill wagon on the right side and then the remaining portion. And that would be on that far right side, basically past that white. Uh, it's part of a mini-split system. Um, sec, secondly, we would have four picnic tables with umbrellas. Um, we would have cornhole down the back. Um, safety is a top priority. My family's gonna be there, my daughter, my wife. We'll have Jersey barriers. We wanted to meet all requirements. Uh, and we've talked about doing a, um, quarter party. So there is a public restroom that they can use. It is a seasonal space. It's all weather dependent, so it could be six months, it could be five months. I mean, all depends kind of what the weather goes. I think one of the concerns, too, was simply, you know, people being there after hours. Everything, the lighting will always be, like, when we close, the lights are gonna go off. I don't want anybody on the property after hours. It is an insurance liability issue for us also. So basically, when we close, that'll be the end of the space for the day. We open back up the next day. I'll definitely have signage, talking about we have security cameras and, you know, keeping the place clean, things like that. But I really wanted to bring the community together, and I couldn't think of a better way to do it, where people can come and hang out and have a slush, a soda, enjoy the time with their family, and kind of reminisce of what the place used to be like. So if anybody has any questions, I'd be happy to answer, and I appreciate your time. What about?
I almost hate saying this on the record, but, um, we got surprised when we built the bandstand. And we, I just, I'm, just happened to see it tonight. We showed the photos with the grass access. Are we gonna have to worry about handicap access?
I will say that this proposal has been reviewed by the building commissioner, who is also the ADA coordinator. And he has also indicated that he would demand a, um, an inspection of the premise when set up. They've been on-site with fire department as well for making sure there's adequate access to and through. And just like with, say, the, uh, the restaurants for the outdoor dining that you folks have had, they will demand to inspect the barriers to make sure that it's adequate and safe for operation there. So they don't object, they just want their inspections.
So they don't object, they just want their inspections.
Yeah, I'm wondering, too, like with, if you had water-filled barriers that have a plug, could that be a solution for the fire department, because you could quickly drain them, move them, and that would have the ability for the truck to get down the side of the building?
I'm going out on a limb here, I don't think the fire department's going to bring a truck down that.
Yeah.
But anyways, we were just surprised by the fact that, even though it was a flat surface on the common.
Yep.
That was, does not meet the state architectural review board's standards for handicap access. So just want to make sure we're good on this with that respect. But I appreciate everything that happened today, because, you know, there's been a lot of, I mean, I talked to Joe this morning at quarter at nine. I know there's been a lot of work in terms of bringing in a porta potty to address the lack of, of septic capacity.
Yep. So we, we would imagine, as, if you take favorable action, we would imagine it would be contingent upon satisfactory, you know, review by.
Administrative review by the.
Where you always tie it to public safety, which includes a building commission, which covers accessibility? Yeah.
That's all I just, we just wanted to ask because of the grass.
Such a buzzkill, Bob.
Yeah.
What?
Such a buzzkill.
It's in the interest of providing, education, background.
I want it to be safe and accessible to everyone, that's, you know what I mean?
I don't want you to be surprised because.
My wife was actually hit by a car three weeks ago, so she's on crutches, and it's a whole thing. So it's, it's, believe me, I understand the point of access, and I understand exactly where you're coming from.
I just wondered if you understand that, it turns out grass does not count.
Right.
Yeah.
Tony?
I know, I have nothing.
Good.
I think it's great, I'm, I'm happy with administrative review.
Yeah, my kids are going to love it, but that way, they're there sitting on the front anyways, they'll get to sit on the side.
We'd love to have you down, I think it's going to be a lot of fun, and I think it's going to be great. I did something similar in high school with an art project, and kind of involved the whole high school, it was pretty cool. So this is, kind of brings back some memories of that, and.
So I, I applaud that with the beautification and fitting into the neighborhood, so thank you.
Yeah, I, I think it's going to be great, I really do. At least in my head, it looks great, so.
I like the idea of the mural, it's cool.
Yeah, I do, too.
Yeah.
So what is, just so that there, what are your hours of operation?
So Monday through Friday, it's six A M. to eight P M. Weekends are seven A M. to eight P M. Again, I'll put every, all the lights on a timer, they're energy efficient. I, you know, I was thinking even to, between the two Jersey barriers, to put like a chain that says closed. And obviously, we'll have a sign, have a great sign guy, he can make anything, and we'll put the hours of operation and the rules and kind of regulation that I expect. And, you know, sometimes we have kids that are a little rowdy, things like that, but, you know, I always feel like if I talk to them like an adult, respectfully, ninety-nine percent of the kids are absolutely great, they really are, going to clean up after themselves and all that stuff, so.
All right, so can I get a motion to authorize administrative review and approval of seasonal outdoor seating on the east side of the building at sixty Brookside Road for PB two-four-one-three?
So moved.
Second.
Motion second, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Much, yes?
I appreciate it.
We will put together something in writing for you, just so you have for your records as well.
Okay.
We'll share that with the folks who reviewed it, so they know as well.
Okay, and then I, I talked to Abby, I have to get a application or permit for the porta potty and get a license company down, so we'll do all that, too.
Yep.
All right.
All right.
Okay, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, have a great night.
Too. All right, so moving on to review of that draft minutes, can I get a motion to approve the draft minutes on March eighteenth, April first, April sixteenth, and April nineteenth?
I'll make a motion to approve the, the meeting minutes for March eighteenth, two thousand twenty-four.
So moved, second.
Any discussion?
And none.
I have none, Bob?
Nope.
Favor for approving March eighteenth, say aye?
Aye.
Motion to approve April first?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Good, Bob?
I'm good, I'm.
Good.
Fine.
All right, so all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
April sixteenth, motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All right, hearing none, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Lastly, April nineteenth?
So moved.
It says, is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Abstain.
All right, moving on to correspondence, reports and update, I don't recall seeing anything, nope, nothing there. Okay, anybody else have anything they would like to discuss?
Who goes to, for the MBTA communities?
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah, that was, nice job.
A lot of effort by a lot of people.
And by the, the committee, nice job, you guys.
Good to see it pass.
Yeah.
All right, so can I get a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Thank you.